All right, I'd like to call to order our regular meeting of the Brandon Board of Education for today, Monday, July 19. I'll call it to order now, may I please have a roll call? Sorry, just got some changes here, I guess we'll put it out here. All right, Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Here.
Hillary Stokowski?
Here.
Jeff Zolki?
Here.
Rebecca Haines?
Here.
Melissa Clark? Here. Diane Salter?
Here.
Dr. Carl Heidrich?
Here.
Jan Meek?
Here.
Carly Stone?
Here.
Diane Zedan?
Here.
Lisa Cabuna?
Here.
Thank you. Can we stand to the public reasons?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have public comments and questions on Agenda Business. I do not see any hands raised at this time. Very good, thank you. Superintendent's report, please.
Yes, the, good evening, the first one item I have is the bottom of it. We have a motion on the agenda to approve ballot language to be called the election. And also I'd like to announce that we're beginning to organize our informational campaign as a district. And so we'll have an informational calendar that we will put out in August, and that will be all the activities that the district will be doing to communicate with the public regarding the ballot. That would be including calendar dates and additional community forums. So we have community forums in the spring, so we'll have another opportunity for parents to have opportunities for questions and answers in the fall as well. Probably in September and October is when we'll organize that. We'll be creating a link to the website for question and answer. So if there's questions that could be submitted electronically, we will answer those questions individually or as a group, and we'll have a running tally of those questions and answers. So anybody can go on the website and see what questions were asked and how the district responded to those questions regarding the ballot. And finally, we'll be putting out a information mailer in the fall to all voters so that they have information about the community forums and when the times of dates are, possibly voting locations, and information in need for the elections. And so that would be for November 2nd. And the mail-in increase, $26.19 a month. So that's my bottom update.
Any board members have any questions on that topic for Dr. Heidrich at this point?
So, the community forums are going to start September, October?
Yes, so once school gets started, we're looking at probably doing one in mid to late September and a couple of them in October. So we're thinking about doing three of them, three different evenings, or breaking into six different sessions, a possibly morning session, afternoon-evening session for three different dates.
All the way in again? Yeah, accessible, it's good. Does anybody else have any question on the forum? Okay.
The next update in report would be for fall planning. We're in full swing for fall planning. We have some resignations and retirements, and we also have some new hires. So I think that's normal for the school district to go through every summer. And so that's taking place right now. We've had some high-quality candidates that we're offering positions to. And we also have Dave Wyatt's resignation from high school assistant principal. And we're in the process of hiring a new assistant principal and Brandon Mert from Home principal to replace Mr. Wyatt, and we wish Mr. Wyatt the best for his years of service at Brandon. So that's up and coming, and an announcement would be sent out to parents who are new hires for the assistant principal role. Further, and it's a question on a lot of parents' minds, what we're doing in the fall as it relates to mask, or make masks optional. And at this point, we announced that summer school program will be mask optional for all of our buildings. We're going to continue to do so. A majority of our summer school starts in early August, so for our buildings, we'll have mask optional inward. We're expecting to continue mask optional for the fall. And so that's something that I would be addressing with the community and parents by early next week, talking about our intentions to go mask optional for our school buildings. However, there is a CDC requirement that for public transportation, and our school buses fall under that requirement at this point in time. And that says that masks are required to be worn on school buses. So, here is where the district is at for right now. Because that requirement is in place, the letter will talk about mask optional for summer school in the fall, and it's recommendation that we follow the summer school requirement for busing as the CDC requires. However, it's too early to tell if there's changes in that CDC requirement between now and the start of school year. So to go and say that that requirement is part of next fall is too early to tell. It's six weeks away or so, and we don't know what that looks like at that point. But for right now, looking at the CDC recommendations, our lean is to be mask optional for our school buildings going into the fall as it stands today.
Are you receiving any murmurings from our Oakland County Health Department, and of course the Michigan Health Department regarding any news they may come out with soon or later? Are they letting this kind of burn, or are they just completely silent?
Right now, it's pretty quiet. We're not getting a lot of information because generally, they're been hands-off since the mandate has been lifted. So now we're looking at recommendations from the CDC, and the Health Department has recommendations near the CDC, but it is a district choice whether to make masks mandated or as an option for next fall because it's a recommendation and not a requirement like the bus transportation.
But as we all know, things can change.
We've got to be prepared, so that's it.
So all fire is planned, but be ready for change.
Planned, and so, like I said, as of today, that's how we, we're starting the fall today, that's how we start the fall, is my recommendation. But we've been very flexible as parents and board and staff and employees over the course of last year. We still may have some times where we have to be flexible and adjust, but we do not anticipate the type of adjustments we had to go through the last school year. It's important that we try to operate as normal as possible for next school year, and that, but there might be some times where that may not be possible depending on the local or regional requirements that may change.
Do you find, and I don't mean to sort of say this, but will not the buses have to have their supply ready to give out to kids? That they may have their mask on in the morning, but the afternoon ride home, you're going to find that they won't find it, they, you know, to lessen some, I don't know if the word is chaos or fear, oh, they can't get on the bus because they can't find my mask. Is there going to be extra supply of masks?
Yes.
We've got a lot.
Okay.
We've got a lot.
It's, yeah, they would operate as normal to have kids out who would walk on the bus morning or afternoon, and ensure that that was available. And we'll see how the next four, four weeks or so shape up. But for summer school, and our ridership is a lot lower than what we would have in the fall, but we would communicate that they should wear the masks on the bus and then have that option during school.
And the comfort, sorry, just to add, the comfort that little ones particularly can see tears, I think that's important, Diane.
So just to reiterate, the CDC is leaving masks in school up to the schools, but we do not have a choice with the buses because they're saying public transportation is required to wear masks, therefore our students have, we don't have a choice in that matter, that's not right.
As of today, it is clear that our choice, we do not have a choice for the bus. We do have a clear choice for how we operate our buildings locally for next fall, and that choice is recommended as mask optional.
I just feel like sort of saying this is that I feel this community helped us so well in some of our decision-making last year by whether it's choosing some options that gave it possible to open up our buildings for as long as we did. But I know the struggle is when somebody gets sick and how pleased I am for the parents that either, you know, tried to keep their kids at home when sick, they wore their mask, you know, but my sense for me is we keep it optional for as long as we can until we're ordered, and if we could open it up for, you know, optional on the bus, we would do that. But again, tomorrow she could make an announcement, or they could make an announcement, somebody could make an announcement, and we are going to be told to do something that we don't get, like you say, we just don't have a choice. So I'm just pleased that this community has allowed this to move forward as well based upon what we did last year, what they did last year, and even the kids and students.
And I think, and we're still going to follow some protocols that makes sense, good hygiene, please don't come to school if you're ill. And we'll try to do the distance the best we can, but we're at three feet, and that's kind of a natural occurrence anyways. We don't think we'll be involved in reporting or tracking the system we look at, and it's going to fall in the Health Department. So we still have some hygiene, cleaning that we're planning to do for next fall, but it doesn't look like the extent of anything like we were doing for last year.
Is there going to be messaging that is, you know, kids are kids, any messaging that mask is optional and those who choose to wear it are free to do it, those who choose not to, just some messaging that's age-appropriate so that there's not any, no little one, no high school, nobody should feel bad for either choice a family is making? So will there be messaging, I assume?
Yeah.
And I'm sure teachers will be promoting that. It's just a message I would like out there because nobody should feel bad for their choice.
I agree.
We want people to feel comfortable coming to school.
Exactly, exactly. You never know the context of someone else's situation, so.
I agree.
Yeah, that would be, first of all, I appreciate the recommendation for mask optional personally. Second, that's my next concern, because all my other concerns would be mandated away. They would be, you know, are subject to mandates that would come down that I would have no choice in anyway, but the messaging is my next greatest concern. Does anybody have any other thoughts or questions on that topic?
Are we, want to ask a question? Or not yet?
Not quite yet, but you will. I promise. All right, so do you have anything else on that topic you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, so just to summarize it, we're putting out a communication to parents related next.
Thank you for that summary. Appreciate it. So any of us who are hearing from community members who wanted, you know, despite what we may share with them from this meeting, they want to see something, we can anticipate at the latest midweek by the time it gets filtered. Okay, very good. Okay.
Okay, the final update is on Brandon Learn From Home. Currently, we have around 130 students, and that includes Summit, and a majority of them are Brandon Learn From Home with our branded teachers. Enrollment is much lower than we pay out in the past, so we went from 600, 700 students down to 130, 812. And it's spread out pretty equally, very equally across the grade levels. We don't anticipate significant changes at the elementary level, but we are looking at multi-grade classes. So for example, we'd keep the program the same, but we'd have a K-1 teacher, a 2, 3 teacher, a 4, 5 teacher. And so we'd have synchronous instruction from the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day for that, those children, and no changes in how we teach them. They would be in the multi-grade format due to lower enrollment. So that's the only change that we look at in the elementary. The secondary, 6th and 12th, would have more changes due to the enrollment. We would be moving towards a vendor-style course, they call that Edmentum, it has very good, very reputable, and we would assign those courses, those core courses, to middle school and high schools. And we would have support from our own branded school district teachers in all the core areas, and opportunities for mentoring, coaching, check-in and checkout on students, help them out, and so that they are successful. So that, that's a little more of a change in the elementary where we don't have a lot of change. But we still will be offering branded school district support during all this, especially at the middle school level and the first two grades of high school, ninth and 10th grade. And that is still more than what we see around us in some of the virtual programs and the surrounding districts, districts, including some of the charter virtual programs. So we're pleased to be able to still offer more than the people around us, the school programs around us, but there are some changes that we're going to be communicating with the 130 students and their families regarding this. Probably two separate letters, one for elementary because there's little change, and we're just having a multi-grade change, and then a little bit more changes for the secondary. We'll have a second letter for those families, so we outline what we're doing next year. We would like to support at the same level, but the enrollment is 80% less than it was in the fall, so, but we would still want to offer a high-quality program. So we're trying to balance that out with our staffing levels and what we can offer, and then picking up a better course called Edmentum, which is, will handle a lot of core instruction.
I have a question. As I anticipate people asking this of me. The support in the higher grades, is the support going to be offered by Brandon teachers in, who teach in that curriculum, or will it be offered by a teacher who is generally assigned to support the Brandon Learn From Home regardless of the subject matter, and they'll serve as like a liaison between the students and the core subject matter teacher? Does that make any sense, what I'm saying?
Yes. Our hope is to have core instruction mentors. For example, if we have, let's say we have 28, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders for social studies, they're taking the Edmentum vendor course in social studies, and then we would support that with a social studies branded teacher that would help mentor and coach them, and check in and check out with them. So that's our hope, is to have specific core teachers assigned to those middle school students in each of those core areas. A math teacher, math branded teacher would support the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students who are taking virtual courses in math. That's our hope to find those core teachers willing to do that and help, to help our students out. And it is possible that we may not get that all the time.
Sure.
Maybe at the secondary level, but I think it's very important that we can find that middle school, that middle.
And consider scheduling accordingly.
Yes.
Core teachers and students, but those who are serving them.
That's right. We're going to try to schedule it out so it makes it work for everyone.
Right.
So they have a whole day that they're assigned to, these students have as much of a regular schedule as they can that mirrors the school days at home.
So those teachers will be splitting their time between face-to-face in the classroom and helping online, or are they solely devoted to online?
You could, when the dust settles, we could get a dual-certified teacher that might have half and half.
Okay.
Or we could have someone, a teacher teach on their planning period that matched up accordingly. It just depends on their certification and how we match this up to the schedule. So it's kind of, kind of a work in progress in trying to find the right teacher to match the right certification and to match the right time of the day that it worked. So we have to put that together now.
Definitely some scheduling.
Fancy footwork.
Yeah, right. Scheduling needs to settle out, you know, all of that is always, that's hard even in person, so.
Right. To be determined, but in progress.
Are there any other questions or discussion points on this topic, Dr. Heidrich?
I just appreciate the care that's being taken to put all that together and to keep that Brandon Learn From Home program, so.
Agreed.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate the full report. All right, next we have a ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda, please.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please? Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna? Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to item seven, for anybody following along, information and discussion items. From a Board of Education report, I wanted to give a shout-out to our policy committee once again for putting in the work and moving us to where we are, which is a great place to be. So thank you to everyone. Kim, you're our first chair, rally everybody, everybody, basically. Look to one side, but no, I sound like.
It's Carl. So thank you, Carl.
Come on to the other side.
So much, Carl.
Everyone, everyone is involved, thank you. So I appreciate that, and then I'll turn it over to Diane to mention some board work to be done tonight.
Yeah, just that we're going to close session, it's a checkpoint for superintendent evaluation, so we'll be closing session obviously at the end of this meeting, but just a reminder on that, that's it.
And then, finance report.
I just have a quick discussion. Tonight you'll be voting on the School Bond Loan Fund Resolution, and for the new members, annually in June, we're required to do this. It's a resolution, so if we need to borrow from the School Bond Loan Fund during the year, it's always in the spring if we need to borrow, fall we make our interest payments. If we need to borrow in order to make our debt payments, then this resolution tonight gives me the authority to borrow in the spring. So that's, it's done annually, every district that anticipates they're going to borrow has to do this. Right now, we are looking at not borrowing. Hopefully we'll have to borrow because if bond passes, then that changes the financials a little bit. So therefore we need the resolution so that if the bond passes, we can borrow in the spring. Any questions on that? Oh, sorry, since new members, I'm just.
I appreciate you. I appreciate the expectation.
Next year, if everyone's, they won't have to talk about all these things.
Yes, we will.
It's a reminder, it's a reminder.
It's always good. You never know what experience prompts the next explanation or question, so.
Don't miss out on a broker record, but.
Okay, I thank you for that. Is there anything else?
No, that's all.
That's all?
Yep, that's the resolution.
We're so brief tonight. We should just sit and chat.
Right, talk about someone playing a brain.
There you go. All right, now we're on to item eight, which includes all of our action items. Our first is, may I have a motion for the approval of the first reading of the policy updates?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the first reading of policy updates as presented.
Support. Any discussion on this item? Again, thank you. All right, may I have a roll call? Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna?
Yes.
Motion passes. May I have a motion regarding the approval of the School Bond Loan Fund Resolution?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the School Bond Loan Fund Resolution as presented.
Support. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please. Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next is, may I have a motion for a resolution to approve the ballot language and call for election?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolution to call for an election and approve ballot language as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding the approval of the food service contract agreement.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the food service contract agreement as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Is this our last group?
This is, this is the next two years. So it's the first group.
First group, it's the last last round, okay. Thank you.
No further discussion, may I have a roll call? Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Next, may I have a motion regarding the approval of the Human Resource Report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Human Resource Report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote? Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Jeff Zolki?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Cabuna?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last motion we have is regarding the approval of the authorized purchase card users. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the updated authorized purchase card users as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
I just mentioned that the board approves the user, user list annually in January. The list does change throughout, people leave, or there we find a need, in this particular instance, the welding teacher, there is a need there in a senior position, so, but it is an ongoing changing list, so perhaps we were thinking of discussing a different way to do that, so.
Going forward, yeah.
I just have one question, just because of our previous list that should be determined, do we have to re-approve once there's a name added to that, I'm assuming, or do we?
Well, I think.
Well, that was another question, too. I was wondering if, do we need the names or the position? That's what the board is comfortable with. It, it does change throughout the year, that's the thing. Positions change, and then people are added in, like I said, the welding. Is this something, I mean, I can bring this every month with an updated list if there is any change.
Is the recommendation to go with a position title? What's the?
I personally think a position title makes more sense.
Yeah, that's, other areas of life. Yeah, that's right. That's what, yeah, that's what I would think.
So that would at least eliminate if somebody changes. Now, again, in the case of the welding teacher being in, then there would be an additional position added because.
But it would be, the changes would be less frequent, right?
Absolutely.
Right, I agree.
Carl, do you have any thoughts or concerns on that?
Well, I was just mirroring what Jen was saying.
We've talked about it.
Sure. Just ready, like, we're all easy, right?
This one has names, crack them.
This one has.
Okay, so I see.
How we've done it prior, so I wanted to bring it with names this time.
I see the next one, we're good with, if you come back with just the positions.
Yeah, I'm wondering if at our next meeting, we could have just the list of positions as like a new start for.
Fresh start, okay.
Yeah.
I think that works.
Yeah, that would work, so that they eliminate the nature of the to-be-determined.
Right, exactly.
Okay, that would be helpful.
So if we could have that for the next meeting, we've got our process rolling that way, and we know what changes would have to occur in the future. So at this point, we want to, we still want to be forward with this motion.
Yeah, so I could get the welding, I would like to be able to give the welding teacher.
Sure. Okay. So, is there any further discussion on that? No? May I have a roll call? Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Jeff Zoki?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colada?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Lisa Calwona?
Yes.
Motion passes. And now, we are on to citizens in court.
Hi. I wrote my name down. My name's Danielle Bartos. I live in Ortonville. I live on Seymour Lake Road. And I just wanted to just let you guys know what I'm hearing from parents all over. So I went to Brandon High School. I went to Brandon my voluntary life, just like my mom and her voluntary family. We're proud to live in a more sheltered and conservative community and we have always trusted our schools. So, my husband and I chose to raise our children here. We have four children. And last year, we know that everything was very unexpected with COVID. And I feel like through the unknown, I feel like we kind of failed our kids, honestly. A lot of kids I know failed, literally failed. So, this next year, I've heard a mixed review of answers of what's going to happen on masks and the testing policy for the sports. I know you guys are saying it's going to be up to the CDC and Oakland County Health Department, but honestly, parents don't care what they're saying anymore. They haven't been right in the past. They've been messing up our communities. Businesses are shutting down. People are hurting. So, we just want you guys to stand up for us, truly stand up for us. We don't care what they're saying. We don't. I am part of Brandon baseball. Parents are mad. They might not be here right now, but they're like, I stand with you. I support what you're saying. I will sign a petition if that's what it takes. Soccer, same exact thing. They will sign petitions saying, we do not care. We do not want our kids wearing masks on buses. I see these kids waiting out at the end of the road, waiting with their masks on their chin. The second they step on that bus, they pull their mask up. They're five years old. What are we doing? What are we doing? I don't care what the CDC says. These kids learn social and emotionally from expressions. That is how these children learn. I'm talking to speech therapists. I'm talking to dentists. These masks are harming our kids and I am done. Parents are done. They're not properly trained in PPE either. I don't know if you guys actually understand, personal, this personal protection gear, it requires training. My husband takes these bloodborne pathogen testing classes. You take your mask off with your pinkies, you throw them away when you leave a room, and you put a new one on. These kids have no training whatsoever, none. And then they're taking their masks off at lunch, leaving it on the table, it's getting filled with germs. There's a British Medical Journal study that says that masks, the actual cloth masks versus the N95 masks, which no one wears, there's no comparison. These cloth masks hold bacteria and infection and it is spreading to your kid's mouths. And the dentists are seeing more plaque and bacteria buildup than they have ever seen in their voluntary lifetime. It is time for us as a community to just say, no more. We don't want, nobody wants to do this anymore. These kids are tired of it. The high school kids are already into this thing where it's almost like it's programmed into them. But these little kids still have a chance. No, no. These little kids do not deserve it. I see kids running around on the playground in masks. They can't even get close to their friends. What are we doing to these children? If you don't believe me about this study, you have to look it up on DuckDuckGo because Google, I couldn't find it anywhere. Now, the cloth masks, like I said, they hold infection. My kids won't even do their own laundry. Do you expect these high school kids to wash their masks every day? No. They are wearing them day after day after day after day. And they are filled with infection, filled with bacteria, filled with disgustingness. Seriously, it's disgusting. Now, I'm not anti-mask, I'm for choice. I appreciate that you guys are saying that we will potentially have a choice. But even if the Oakland County Health Department says that we don't, I say that we say that we do. Because Brandon, we've always been different. We're a school of excellence supposedly, but you want to know what? People are going to be pulling their kids. I'm not kidding. The sidelines at the soccer games and baseball fields are saying, we will take our kids and we will put them in the, these church schools, because guess what? They're letting us make our own choices. We have the freedom to make our own choices and we will go and we will go where the freedom is. Now, the masks not only cause dermatological issues, so these kids are getting acne, they're getting infections in their mouths, it's causing headaches, poor, have you guys even talked to the teachers? Poor school performance? My little cousins are failing and they were A students. They cannot do this online stuff. And even in person, these masks are going to be a huge distraction and they already are a huge distraction. Depression is up, suicide is up, drug use is up, overdosing, all that is sky high. We need to provide our kids with a place where they feel safe. They need the option and they need the option on the bus. That's not, that's honestly, excuse my language, screw the CDC. The survival rate is extremely high, extremely, extremely, extremely high in kids. And the rate of infection in kids is extremely, extremely low, so I don't know why we would be making these crazy choices for these young children. They don't have a union backing them. They only have us parents. So we are standing up and we're saying enough is enough. And I will get more people here next time and I will get more people here the next time and I will get even more people here the next time. And we will continue to voice our opinion. We will fight back. We'll fight back against mandatory testing for these sports. I can't even believe what you guys allow to go on during the whole sports seasons. My little cousins getting tested every single Sunday so they can play sports. What in the heck? That's disgusting. They have, they have an agent that they put on these Q-tips that they swab the kids with. It is causing infertility. It is literally, it is banned in a bunch of countries, but we're putting it up our kids' nose every single week. No, thank you. We're going to fight back against critical race theory if it comes down to it. We will. Us parents will all stand up against it. We don't want to see it in our schools. Nobody wants to see it in our schools. I'm coming, I come from a mixed family. I don't want that in my schools. My husband doesn't want it in our schools. Nobody wants it in their schools. It's up to us parents to teach our kids to treat people with respect and we should be doing that. Maybe you guys can send home something. That's what I would recommend. Send home something to get approved if you want to touch on a certain subject. And we don't, us parents, we don't want to be in the dark until the 11th hour. Do you remember last year? It was like, school, no school, school, no school, mask, no mask. No, we don't want that. We want a choice made so that we can make decisions for what's best for our kids and so we can take them to a different school if it comes down to it. Because there was kids who, my little cousins wanted to go back to school in person and there wasn't enough room. And then she failed. She's in summer school now. I just, I think that if you really look at the grand scheme of things, wear a mask if you want to, don't if you don't want to. I don't believe in bullying. I don't think you should be bullied into either way. But I definitely believe that the buses, that is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. You're literally all going to the same exact place to take your mask off. We should be fighting it. School board should be standing up and fighting it. Superintendent should be fighting it. Principals should be fighting it. Parents are going to start fighting it even more. You'll see it more and more. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens in court?
Let me check here. I just had a question.
Sure.
Most about.
I'm sorry, can I hear your name?
Oh, yeah, Michelle Bass.
Bass?
Bass, yeah.
Thank you.
And you live where?
I live on Alfred Court.
Alfred Court.
I had a question about what you said about the protocols that are coming up, that you suspect will come up in the next year about distancing. You said something about three feet, was that correct?
Well, yeah, right now, that the recommendation from the CDC is they backed off from six to three. So we backed off from that last spring and we are going to continue to, that's going to be something that's three or less or even that it really is going to follow with. So, something we have to look at, but at this point, the protocols I've seen last year are not the same protocols we've seen before.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really know what to expect for this upcoming year. But does the three-foot rule apply classroom hallways everywhere or is it just?
Yeah, we're going to try, try to look at three feet the best we can, but.
And what happens if they stick to that? Because my daughter's pretty young.
That's why I say it's going to, at this point, it's difficult to measure.
Yeah. I mean, do they get trouble or like?
No, no, no. It's just something that we're just not wearing this at this point.
Do they like hound any of their kids to like keep them in?
Yeah.
Because that's like my, that's my biggest thing is I'm trying not let my daughter learn to be afraid of people. So like, that's my biggest thing, like, I don't want her to go to school and be like, oh.
Yeah, I think that's definitely changes from last year. It's not going to look the same, but it's going to be more.
I don't know what last year looked like. So.
So, the rule for the reason why they put that in a place before to have the six feet was they were, they were, we were tracing. We had to, we were bound to trace. So then, like, if I'm sitting here and she's sitting there and she, you know, tested positive for COVID, then they were requiring us to quarantine the kids that were six feet apart. That's where that is. So, we reduced it down to three feet, which made it, so we had to quarantine less kids. Just hear me out. So like, if there was, you know, there was Kim, me and Hillary and if we were six feet apart and I was three feet from her, it's just what they were having us do, then I was quarantined, but Hillary didn't have to if we were six feet apart. Where before, we had, we would all have to quarantine. That's what the health department made us do. So you're saying they're making us do the three-foot this year?
No, there's a, there's a host of recommendations, there's a bunch of recommendations out there from the CDC. We have to sort what makes sense for Brandon. Things like I talked about before, good hygiene, make sure if you're sick, you come home. Like, we're going down that list and make sure that it works for the community and the child.
So are we required to contract trace this year?
We are not required to contract.
Some of that came directly from the Michigan Health Department and the local health department. And so there's like three levels, right? You have CDC.
Right.
And then you have the Michigan Health Department and then you have our local Oakland County Health Department. Most often, the Oakland County Health Department followed suit with the Michigan Health Department. But they, it also, based on Oakland County being very, you know, populated, might differ from what a county and the UP might have provided for. So there were three tiers. Right now, what Dr. Heidrich's saying is that, if I will, is that the only information we have right now as of today are recommendations as to in-school and then requirements as to public transportation. The two other authorities, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Oakland County Health Department are not, they're in essence silent right now in contrast to where we were last year. So when we were talking earlier about some of these issues being up in the air or, you know, possibly being subject to further information, that's what we were hearkening back to is the mandates that were out there.
I guess my concern is more so like, how, how are they implementing it?